Are you in New Hampshire?
Yeah.
Where are your cats?
They're in DC, they're in Delaware.
I'm sorry, there was just, we didn't, we didn't, we couldn't find a cat sitter. Or we couldn't get our cat sitter. So Brooke is in Lewis with the cats and I'm up here. We had some painting work done and I came up to take a look at it.
Oh wow. Have you ever traveled with them?
With the cats?
Yeah.
Not this group. It's going to be, it's gonna be interesting.
I understand some travel well and some don't.
I think that's.
Will you cage them or not?
Oh, we have bought these Taj, mini Taj Mahals for them. I mean, they're gigantic, they're enormous. They come with their own little litter boxes. I mean, we'll make, that and drugs will make it as easy as possible.
So, you know, you'll need an extra vehicle just to transport the cats.
There's some truth to that. Some truth to that.
I used, I had a cat that used to travel uncaged and his favorite place to be was on the dashboard of the car.
Convenient.
He was good. People would drive by and they'd pass me and they'd look at him like, they thought it was, you know, some stuffed animal and then he'd move.
We used to take them back and forth to Washington, but they were always caged and belted in, I might add.
Okay, okay.
In their cages.
Tried to belt in my dog, but he just gnawed through the belt.
I think Mac needs an agent, a PR agent, I think.
That's the previous dog I didn't.
Oh. Well, I think animals don't like to be strapped in if they can avoid it.
I can show you my, my newly painted white cabinets if you want to see them.
I think I can see them in the back, behind your head. They look nice.
Yeah, and Ted, I, what I have on is that.
The light, okay.
Ridiculous light that I sent you.
You like it? Yeah, it's good.
I don't know why, I am just so smitten with this silly light. It's, I got it for 60 bucks in a junk store and it's, it turns out, little research, it's a 1945 Loweski and Loweski crinkle glass orb. I don't know what else to call it. It's very, but it just, it goes, it just works somehow.
Looks good.
Well, it's, it is a very silly light, but I just.
It works, you know?
It makes me smile, what can I say?
Okay, it works.
Here it is. Since I, well, that's kind of the bottom.
Oh.
Can't really tell from the bottom.
Well, you're not up there with candles and.
Well, if the, if the winter is bad as they say they're gonna be, I may be with candles. I've taken a flashlight upstairs for sure.
Okay. All right, well, it is six o'clock and it looks like we're all here and we have 10 attendees, so that's great. Nice to have an audience here with us. So we are here for a meeting of the mayor and city council. We have a public hearing and it is February 1st at 6:00 PM. The item on the, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing and discussion for an additional, for an ordinance establishing moratorium on the application of the provisions of chapter 197, section 197-75, water resource protection areas, source water protection overlay of the municipal code of the city of Lewis, Delaware for an area located between the Lewis-Rohoboth Canal and the Delaware Bay. And I know there's been a lot of work that's gone on into this and Janelle, would you like to talk to us about that first?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So this section of code is again part of the source water protection zone that the city has that was required to be adopted by the state in 2008. This, there's two components to that, that section of code. One is the wellhead protection. What this is for tonight is the excellent recharge area that deals with more of the groundwater and how it gets into the aquifers and the protection of that. Several years ago, it was identified that there had not been strict enforcement of the ordinance. And we've also had some issues come up that we've recognized we were trying to address that, that maybe it needs some changes. So a proposal for a moratorium on the impact of the source water protection for the excellent recharge area. And a very specific area, it does, which is between the bay and, and the canal, to put a moratorium on the enforcement of that as, so the city can consider additional options for the excellent recharge area. And there is a proposed ordinance for those changes that, not for tonight's discussion, but there is proposed, that's been introduced and is being considered by the planning commission.
Great. Thank you. Emery, do you have any comments you wanted to add to that?
Not really. Just that, you know, we, we did determine that through oversight, it had not been properly applied on a number of, well, on pretty much all permits on the Lewis Beach area since the ordinance was adopted. So we want to make sure that in putting something in place, it is something that the, the community understands and can live with.
And I assume that Denrick is aware that this consideration of the moratorium, is that correct?
Yes, we've had discussions with Denrick. They said their, their interest is principally in what is adopted at the end of the process, not, not on the process to get there.
Emery, did they, did they provide any insight into what they, they would like or not like to see? In, since this is a state mandate, did they provide any guidance?
Um, yes, not, I mean, not, not specifics, but they indicated that this is an area that even though it's separated from the city's wellfield area from, with the canal, so, you know, it doesn't replenish the, the aquifers for the city's well. What they said was that the, the state statute looks to preserve the overall groundwater resource. Not specifically for, you know, it's not for Lewis to protect Lewis's wellfield. It is about protecting the overall groundwater resource because every community south of the canal relies on groundwater for, for our drinking water supply. So we're supposed to be looking globally at the resource. So I know there's been a lot of discussion that this isn't an important area because it, it doesn't directly replenish our wells. But the, the point that Denrick made is that it doesn't diminish its importance as it relates to the statewide resource. So they do want the result of whatever we come up with, they want to see the result that more water gets into the, the ground instead of running off.
So source water, which is the way this has been referred to, is, is kind of a misnomer, right? Because we're not, what we're not looking at here is, excuse me, protecting the, the source, protecting water that is the source of potable water, but rather groundwater replenishment, whether it actually becomes part of a reservoir for, for Lewis's water or not. Is that, is that right?
Right, because it, I mean, I guess it, we all rely on our neighbors to replenish the overall water supply so that we can all draw from it. So even if this doesn't replenish the, the water supply that we directly draw from, we're relying on people in other locations to, to make sure that their water's getting in the ground and other people rely on us. So the idea is that the, the overall resource, because if everybody only looks at their own supply, then nobody looks at the big picture and you're gonna end up with, you know, a threatened water supply because all of us do rely on groundwater.
And that's, that's understandable. The only part that I don't quite follow is if, if the groundwater on, on the beach, on the area that we're talking about for the moratorium, does not in fact provide, because of its isolated location, right, because it's cut off, does not in fact provide water, a water resource for anybody. I guess that's, that's the only distinction that I see here.
So, um, I'm not sure that you can say definitively that, that it doesn't provide any recharge for anybody. Um, one, it protects from saltwater intrusion, which is important. And two, Pendlopp and Acres has their wells on this side of the canal. So while this doesn't directly replenish their supply, it's, their, their drinking water supply is not separated from this area by the canal. So in terms of, you know, your, your long-term geological water flow, this could affect that area.
It also impacts the overall water quality of just the water in the area. And the water that does eventually recharge back into the aquifers.
So we have the first question out of the box is, what limitations will be in place during the moratorium period? How would this impact building permits and things like that now, Janelle?
So the intent of the moratorium is to, that if you came and got a permit, we would not enforce this portion of, of that source water protection overlay. And that's who it would impact is anybody who is, has property between the canal and the bay. The moratorium would be in effect and would not impact those properties.
So it would be pretty much the way we've been issuing permits up until, up until we discovered this, this oversight.
Correct.
Okay. He's typed in another question and to whom, I'm not sure I understand the question, what limitation?
It's probably easier if, if people want to speak, maybe that we should.
Maybe you could, yeah.
Are you gonna go and open the public hearing there?
Yes, right, but go ahead and open it.
Okay, Sumner should be unmuted now.
He just needs to unmute himself.
Can you hear me?
Excellent.
Yes.
So I just want to reiterate something that Anne Marie said. I think it's, let me back up. I worked for the EPA groundwater section that worked with the Delaware Groundwater Program to develop the source water protection ordinances back in the early 90s. You know, it's been a long time since I've been involved with the whole program, but the first thing, I, I mean, I applaud the way Anne Marie and Janelle just described everything. I guess the question that I would pose is, and it builds on what Anne Marie said, we can't be certain that what goes on, on one side of the canal doesn't affect what goes on on the other side. Without a pretty detailed hydrogeologic study, I think it'd be wrong of us to presume simply because there's a shallow water body between the two that, you know, when you've got hundreds of feet of aquifer underneath that canal, that there might not be some hydrologic connection. And as I think Janelle said, the, the issue of saltwater intrusion is a really important point. The question I was asking basically had to do with what the limitations were. I had trouble understanding what, what it was and it may just be, I just didn't spend the time with it. The, the to whom part was, does it limit our abilities to enforce? And it sounds like it does. That, that was all I was asking. But I'm assuming that what this means is there is sunset. There is a fairly short timeframe that we have to resolve this and the idea is that once we do that, then there will be some sort of protection in place.
Right, so the ordinance as it's written would have the moratorium in place for six months. And right now, there is a draft ordinance that's pending before the planning commission that I believe will be taken up on Friday by the.
Wetlands Buffer.
Yes, the Wetlands Buffer Subcommittee. So the, the hope is that the planning commission can complete its review in, in a expeditious manner so that it can come back to mayor and council. And, and then they can, can act on it also expeditiously. We do not want this to drag on forever because this is something that, that we do need to fix.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Sumner. Anyone else in the, in the attendees wish to make a comment or Tim, you had a comment?
I have a question, actually, a couple of questions probably. Do I understand from your description, Emery, of the Wetland Buffer Committee work, is the expectation that their work will co, will create possibly a recommendation that would in turn be given to mayor and council to consider and that that would dovetail with the action that we're being, that we're considering right now? Is that correct? That they would, they dovetail? Is that right?
Correct.
So we would have the benefit of their advice, their recommendations before we actually vote on this, correct?
Correct. Well, no, not on the moratorium. Moratorium is for you guys, the proposed draft changes to the, to the ordinance itself. A subcommittee and the planning commission will be making a recommendation, but not regarding the moratorium. Moratorium is just for council's determination.
Moratorium hits the pause button so that there's time to, to draft an ordinance, vet an ordinance and get it put into place.
And it also, does it not also allow a property owner to, who might be affected by the existing labeling, that he or she would be able to then, in the meantime, submit an application for development?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, that is right.
Yeah, so it does not prevent development.
Correct.
Kay's typed into the comment section that we hope to have a motion for LPC and then mayor and city council.
Veronica Faust has her hand up.
Okay, Veronica, you want to join us? Hi Veronica, need to unmute yourself, good.
Hi all, thank you for recognizing us. I'm here this evening with Rick Quill. We did submit a letter to the town dated January 28, 2021, to the mayor and council. And we just wanted to make sure that that letter and the attachment became part of the record and that the mayor and council were considering it.
Right, and we did receive it today, so it will be part of the record.
Thank you. I would just like to, to make some, just one comment and I won't, won't be long. I do, we had a conference with Denrick and Anne Marie and Janelle. And at that time, I, I know Anne Marie and we understand that everyone is under the impression that this ordinance is to protect other groundwater in addition to the Lewis aquifers. I don't think, we, we have not seen and nor did the conversation we had with Dunrick or Anne Marie or Janelle reflect how water that infiltrates the ground on Lewis Beach impacts source water anywhere. And, and that's why we just want to make sure that whatever ordinance is crafted to address this issue is crafted reasonably and is reasonably tailored to its intent. When Mr. Quill and his partners looked into doing the testing that the current ordinance requires, we got estimates for this work ranging from $13,000 when that was open-ended to $30,000. So that means that anybody who built on Lewis Beach, because this is not limited to commercial areas at this time when we were doing this, this was residential, people would be required, and our letter outlines a very stringent testing that is required. And it would add $30,000, as much as $30,000 to building cost on Lewis Beach. We asked our water resource engineer to put the overlay map over Lewis Beach. And this would impact properties from New, New York Avenue towards the ocean. So this covers a large swath of Lewis Beach. It covers Cape Shores. It covers Cape Pendlopp and Drive. It covers at least half of Lewis Beach and all the streets thereon. So people, anybody who went to go build on Lewis Beach and essentially would be subject to this ordinance. And it is very stringent. It requires you to dig wells. It requires you to do testing. And it, it adds an incredible expense. So when this ordinance is recrafted, time and attention really needs to be paid to what you're actually asking homeowners to do. Rick, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, thank you all for considering this moratorium. Not knowing this provision, when we set out to develop this property, it's not an excuse for not adhering to it. When it was brought to our attention back over about 13 months ago in December of 2019, kind of threw, threw us for a curve ball, but nonetheless, that's no excuse not to buy by it. We didn't go out shopping for a scientist to give us position. I was, you know, I was kind of taken aback. I was up in Boston, but you know, those are cards that are dealt us. Let's play these cards. And contacting our engineer, Davis Bone, they gave us some three or two or three different, three, I believe, different engineers. One was Hines out of Baltimore and they were the first one we contacted. And that was one, the one, the open ended 13,000. But anyway, so we, they, we got, our engineer said, let, let me contact Delfield. It's a local, they're very reputable. And that's when it was brought to our attention by Steve Cahill, a hydrologist, a scientist that, you know, for all the reasons within his report that you have in front of you should be, should be paid attention to. We're not saying, we're not, we don't care about drinking water or potable water. What we're asking for, and we're not, and we, and we're not, we're not saying, oh, you never did it in 12 years. When we found out about it, you didn't apply from 2008 to 2010 and five weeks after our rezoning from general commercial to R3, within five weeks of that, there was a memorandum sent out. And you're well aware of that memorandum by Tom West and Anne Marie saying it was an oversight. We'll give you that, we'll give you that phrase, oversight. Subsequently, from 2018 to 2021, we're asking again, where's the application? We don't even care about that. We're not even bringing that up. We feel with our scientists has merit that is not applicable for a lot of reasons. And the reasons start way back before 2008. In 2003, we went to Lewis BPW and they sort of weighed in on it, but it was not their decision, told up, told me that the wells were capped on Lewis Beach side of town in 1945. The flow of water has no application whatsoever. My question is after talking to Steve Cahill, talking to Lewis BPW, talking to Denrick, who says they're not gonna weigh in on this. You know, they have their provisions, but not weighing in on this because they said it's a local ordinance. Does, has the city of Lewis ever talked to their engineer and saying this? We're not saying the water's not important with the flow of it, but we're rising sea levels and the flow of the water and the fact of the matter that the five wells currently operated by the city of Lewis is 2.1 to 2.8 miles away over Cape Pendlopp and, or, or across from Cape Pendlopp High School. You guys are also considering, you're not considering, you're, you're paying three million or two and a half or three million out of a five and a half million dollar acquisition to another spot, 37 acres for Paul Townsend to, to protect your wellheads. Alls we're asking for is reasonable, sensible solutions. We have been working on this project for four years. And one of the things that takes me aback is because when I read in the Cape Gazette, and that's the next issue coming up, that there has been no activity on this site. And that's the verbiage, exactly. I can. And that's the verbiage exactly. I can read it to you. That's so far from the truth. We have already spent tens of thousands of dollars in legal fees and engineering fees. And we know that's part and parcel, but alls we're asking for is an equitable solution that's fair to everybody. And and if Steve Cahill is on the on the Zoom, if you have any questions, I ask you, I would say, maybe I guess it's going to go to planning commission, we'll have to bring him before there. But we're not, what I'm getting at is scientifically, his his report has a lot of validation. And I've seen no other report that disqualifies his report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Veronica, anything else you want to add at this point?
No, mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else care to comment on this moratorium? Yes, Rob, you got, you're muted. You're muted, Rob. You got to unmute yourself.
I want to wait for the public to finish, but I do have a couple of questions after.
Okay, thank you.
Steve Cahill has his hand up. I'm unmuting him.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Sure.
Hi.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, thank you. I I was the one who prepared the report that Rick referenced. And I did want to talk about that a little bit. When we talked to Denrec, I think last week, you know, they they made the point and it was brought up tonight too, that it is very important to, you know, protect aquifers and specifically protecting different parts of aquifers. So if you pave over large areas and you're not getting infiltration, you'd lose water. And that affects water elsewhere in the aquifer. Now, the situation between the canal and the bay is very different. Saltwater intrusion has been established way past the canal since the nineteen fifties. And that's why your wells were moved uphill towards the high school. Some groundwater modeling was also done by the DGS indicating, you know, saltwater beneath the canal. So and of course, saltwater's heavier than freshwater. And when you get infiltration from precipitation, that water is, you know, mounting up on the saltwater and then discharges into the bay and somewhat into the canal. So I think it's pretty good evidence that this isn't contributing to protecting source water or drinking water. And but that's not to say we don't want to still protect what's there. And in my my thoughts were, you know, you want to support or encourage recharge when you build. But the the way the code written, it is very, very cumbersome. And there are a lot of requirements that really don't apply to this area that are really applied to protecting drinking water. So we we just think that the code could be maybe, you know, rewritten, I would say specific for that area, not the rest of the town because it's a very unique situation, you know, encourage encourage recharge, but scale back the requirements. You know, the all the extensive studies, borings, wells, infiltration testing, these climatic water balances and things like that.
Thank you.
And someone referred to the, is it the Henlopen Acres Wells?
Yes.
And where are those located?
Located on the beach side of the canal.
Yeah, now I have to guess they're not shallow wells. They're in a confined aquifer is my guess.
I don't know. Emery, do you have any details on that? I don't.
I don't, I don't know where where exactly their wells are.
Yeah, I can't imagine they're they're extracted confined aquifer in that location. So they're probably in a confined aquifer, which again is not being fed by water on Lewis Beach that dropped on Lewis Beach. And again, I, you know, I love Lewis, Cape Henlopen off season is my favorite spot in the world. I want to protect Lewis too. In a practical manner. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, any other comments? If you either raise your hand or submit something in the chat. Okay, Rob, I think we're ready for your questions.
Thanks, Ted. I my first question is actually for Mr. Cahill. We heard that the aquifer, the drinking water aquifer actually extends hundreds of feet below the canal. And I think that's a little bit inconsistent with your report as I read it. Is, are you saying that the drinking water aquifer is blocked by the canal?
No, I'm not. I'm saying that the, there is saltwater beneath the canal and in in the aquifer in that area. And your your fresh water is riding on top of it and and discharging shallow into the bay and into the canal. And I don't think it's making it. And groundwater flows from the wells, from the well areas towards the bay. So groundwater is flowing towards the canal.
I think you said that the reason that the BPW moved their their wellheads was because saltwater intrusion had already occurred where they were before. Is saltwater intrusion a, I mean, once you detect it, you've lost the war and you might as well give up? Or by replenishing the the groundwater aquifer, do you do you help slow it or stop it?
I think you could help slow it. Again, on the land side of the canal, of course. I think on the the bay side of the canal, I don't think it makes a difference, in my opinion, my professional opinion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cahill. Sure, I have a couple of other questions, Ted. Emery, did, has anybody from Henlopen Acres been contacted for their opinion about this?
No.
You think that might be an idea?
Um, we could certainly contact them. Again, I don't know that there's any evidence that that they, that this does directly replenish their wells. But I I think it was more the point that because this is on the opposite side of the canal, it doesn't matter. You know, it's on the opposite side of the canal from our wells, but there are wells on this side of the canal. We can certainly reach out to them.
I heard Mr. Cahill making what I thought was a guess that they draw their water from a confined aquifer and and they would know better.
Correct.
My only other question is for, may I tap Glenn's expertise?
Of course.
Glenn, the, one of the recitals to the the proposed resolution refers to the state code. And it it sounds as though from that one recital, it the state is leaving it to the discretion of the municipality, what ordinance to adopt. Or is that accurate? Or are we actually proposing to be a little bit in conflict with the state code?
I I think it's fair to say that we're proposing to be a little bit in conflict with the state code for some time being while we try to figure out if there's a mechanism that allows to be incomplete compliance while still recognizing the competing goals.
Can you point us to a, to the reference in the state code with which we would be in conflict?
I don't, I really don't have it up right now, but but I I mean, I think it's, this is a mandatory through two thousand people or more. It's mandatory that you have this sort of an ordinance in place.
Yeah, it's Title VII, Chapter sixty, I believe.
Sixty.
And it is.
Subchapter six.
Subchapter six, seventy-five was the. I guess it's not seventy-five. It's section sixty-eight-two.
Thanks very much. Mayor, that's all I had.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions from the table?
Yeah. Steve Cahill's hand is up.
Steve Cahill, I didn't see your hand. Okay, go ahead. Steve, you want to speak again? You're on.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I I just wanted to mention too, looking at, I would be tempted to leave, you know, some of the requirements concerning, you know, storage of hazardous waste, petroleum tanks and things like that, still deem it an excellent recharge area. But maybe just change the way you you require folks to investigate or assess the properties. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Okay, Jim.
Thank you. I think it was Mr. Cahill who described the, made the suggestion that some of the technical aspects of the code should be considered for, well, be eliminated from any future code. And what I, my question is, does anyone know how the technical aspects got included in the present code? And I guess more directly what I'm I'm asking is, is that, is some of that language or possibly all of it language that would have come from the state regulators from Denrec and basically handed to the city and then in turn incorporated into our, become incorporated in our code?
I I think you're exactly correct in that. When when this program initially was developed at the state level, that the state, under the statute, that one of the state responsibilities was to delineate the excellent recharge areas and wellhead protection areas and to provide technical assistance to the local governments. So they, the the state did provide model ordinances. And in looking at our ordinance, it looked, it reads very much like some of the model ordinances I looked at. As it relates to the technical report, the technical report is not required in all circumstances. The way the ordinance reads within the excellent recharge area, you can have up to one, or I'm sorry, up to twenty percent impervious cover without having to do the report. If you want to exceed that and go to fifty percent impervious cover, that's when the requirement for the technical report comes in. So if a if a property owner is going to comply with the twenty percent impervious cover, that they would not have to do the report.
Right, okay.
Pretty minimal coverage.
Right.
Right. But that speaks to the intent of the code, what they're, you know, what they're trying to protect, of course. Emery, since the time that this was adopted, and I think it was you or Janelle said it was adopted in, was it two thousand and eight, I believe?
Two thousand and eight. Yeah.
Okay. Has the state rewritten, have they revisited that same kind of draft language? Have, you know, and is there, have they updated it, revised it in any way?
They have not updated their model ordinances, but I don't know that there's been a request to. I think, you know, somewhere in that, you know, two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten time period, the municipalities that were required to have an ordinance in place adopted their ordinances. And and I don't believe there was a request for additional model ordinances. Now, we do have a draft ordinance that that Janelle has drafted and and council has referred to the the planning commission that the the Wetlands Buffer Subcommittee will look at later this week. And we have provided a copy of that to the state. And the idea behind what was drafted was instead of saying twenty percent impervious cover or do this report, it was, you know, the objective is we want to get the water into the ground. So you need to implement X number, you know, give you a menu of practices that you can implement to put water back in the ground and have you select from that that menu of of practices. It could be, it could be putting your roof drains underground. It could be putting in a rain garden, you know, different things that would help that water to infiltrate. So that is what has been referred to the planning commission that they'll be reviewing this week. And and one thing I do want to add, I know we're talking about the excellent recharge area and replenishing the groundwater. If if anyone drove around Lewis Beach today, you would see there's a heck of a lot of water. And by replenishing the groundwater, you're not having that amount of runoff either. So it's not, while the the purpose of the state statute is to to get the water into the ground, the side benefit of that as it relates to Lewis Beach is water that often just sits in the road or on people's property might actually find its way into the ground if we have practices that we're requiring to help get it into the ground. So instead of just saying twenty percent or a report, what we looked at was really trying to come up with something that would, you know, meet the objective without putting just these thresholds in.
Right. And Emery, I think I heard you just say a minute ago that the draft language that Janelle has prepared, I think, did you say it has been shared with Denrec?
It has shared. We have not gotten any formal comments back from them, but they they do have.
Right. And do we, what is the normal turnaround for Denrec to make a response to such draft language?
Um.
Are they required like a thirty?
So, you know, they know that the, that it's still pending before the subcommittee and that the planning commission hasn't acted on it. So they may be waiting until the planning commission reviews it to, you know, we we sent it to them so they can see what we have, but we didn't ask them to formally review it yet.
I see. Is your expectation, once that formal request is made, that they can turn around or re-re-prepare a review in like a week's time or two weeks' time?
Um, I wouldn't say a week to two weeks, maybe a month or something, you know, somewhere inside a month, I would expect.
I see. Thank you.
We have one more comment here from Sumner, which says, I believe most of, almost all of Lewis's language comes directly from the state language.
And Veronica has her hand up.
May I ask about that, about Sumner's point? Sumner, do you mean most all of the Lewis language in the proposed ordinance or in the current ordinance?
Hear me?
Yeah.
I mean, in the existing ordinance.
Thanks.
I I I personally think that the draft ordinance that I guess Janelle has worked up strays pretty far from the original intent of the state drinking water act.
And I'm going to stop you right there, Sumner, since you will be voting on this application, not to make any comments before you get that chance to vote on this application, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I can't answer your question, Rob.
Well, no, your question was, do you believe it's, what's currently is the model ordinance from the state? And you did answer that and that was yes.
My understanding is that the language that exists in the books today is based, if not completely, almost completely from the model ordinances that Emery mentioned earlier at the state level.
Yeah. Might be interesting to note, did, Janelle, as you looked at other communities ordinances like this, have, did you see similar language as you may have reviewed Rehoboth or Bethany or?
So most of the other towns that have adopted this pretty much stayed with the model ordinance. They tweaked it here and there for theirs. But what has been proposed is, again, keeping with best management practices and comments received from multiple different ports. That has been, that has been performed for the city.
Repeat that, I couldn't hear. Best, what you proposed is consisting of best management practices and what?
From multiple studies that have been performed for the city.
And what, how do you find the best management practices for this?
Again, I I don't want to get too far into into to the weeds of of our draft ordinance when we're talking about the moratorium ordinance. But there's just some standards that have been determined from other states. Scientists, engineers that say these are just some standard best management practices that have been proven over and over to help do whatever item that it's designed to do.
Right.
So. Yeah. And again, in this instance, we're looking for management and water. Others have like, how do we deal with forestry? I mean, everybody kind of has their best management practices. These are just ones that have been to deal with with water itself.
Okay, it'd be great if you could, if you could elaborate on that to the planning commission and later to us.
Yes.
Thanks.
I think some of that was provided in the Quinn report, was it not?
It was.
Well, and and some of it also, the the Brazilian Community Partnership Report had a, one of the. One of the documents was best management practices for managing water and impervious cover? And it, so and the the menu, so to speak? Many of those things came directly from that.
Andrew's been trying to ask a question here, let's give him the floor.
Just had a question on whether Veronica suggested that? You know, and I've seen as well, I I think I had from New Jersey Avenue on where I think she mentioned Newark Avenue or Newark? But regardless, would this ordinance then? Effect retroactively affect all those homes that have been built at least since two thousand and seven?
No, i- it would be for anything going forward, so it? So if you put, if you adopt the moratorium, which is tonight's discussion? Nothing happens to any of the property, I could come in tomorrow, get my permit, not have to deal with it. But if you adopt a new ordinance? From whatever date specific you adopt that ordinance that you put in and and go into effect date? Then that next day, if I came to get a permit, I would have to then comply. Um, it does not go back retroactively, it would be moving forward.
Okay.
Bonnie, were you trying to ask a question? Yeah?
I I I would, I'd like to follow up on on something Tim was asking. Um, because I'm I'm? A little confused, if if the state statute has been in effect? Um, for quite some time and the? Obviously, Lewis adopted its? Compliance statute, if you will? Two thousand eight, so it's been around for thirteen years? And Denrick hasn't changed anything? And this statute applies? Presumably, since the model statute sounds like it's pretty much been followed? Whenever you have the 20% coverage? Um? In a town of over two thousand, right?
Right.
If if the costs of complying with this statute are as? Um, as Veronica said? Are thirteen to thirty thousand dollars? And every single person who's tried to get a permit in one of these areas has had to pay that? Doesn't that, does that sound? Right, or is is it this particular project that? Generated a higher cost?
It's, I mean, it it depends, I, do you mean? In Lu- on Lewis Beach or throughout the state?
I, well, I, we were talking, Tim was asking the question about whether the state had modified or changed its statute? And I guess what what was going through my mind is, well, if? Every single person who's had to comply with the statute has had to pay tens of thousands of dollars or over ten?
Yeah, I I I don't think that's typically the case.
Okay.
Um, and and every, if you, if you look at, if you were to go through? Comprehensive plans? In the state? And one of the things that's required to be in your comprehensive plan? Is your map of your wellhead protection areas and excellent recharge areas? If you were to? Look at these maps across the state? What you would find is in some cases? In in a lot of cases, the excellent recharge areas just kind of clip a piece of the parcel, so? It's it, one of, because Lewis Beach is a beach? And all of our soils are sandy? They drain very well? That's not typically what you see as you get further west and further north, um, you know, in? In Seaford, I know that they've had challenges because I think their wellhead protection area? Uh, is a lot of it is downtown, so e- every town has had? Their own specific challenges, I haven't seen any that have this specific challenge. I I think the? Specifically as it relates to Lewis Beach, it's a? A very large area because by virtue of being a beach? It it drains well, which? Causes the excellent recharge area, but you also have a lot of? Individual platted lots that are fully encumbered by this, which is not typically what you see if you look at other areas of the state.
Are we comparable to Rehoboth?
I haven't seen Rehoboth.
Fenwick, Dewey, I mean?
Um, so Bethany, Fenwick, Dewey and Rehoboth are all below the population threshold of having to adopt it? So I, what I don't know and and I know Janelle was looking at, I don't know if she's, um? Finished doing that research yet, but she was looking at it for Friday's meeting of the the subcommittee? Um, of which of the beach towns do have something on the books? Because again, for for all the other beach towns, it's voluntary because they they fall below the two thousand threshold? And for those that do have something on the books, what do they have?
Well, Rehoboth would certainly have to have something on the books.
Their their population by census numbers is below two thousand.
Really?
Yes.
But they could volunteer, correct, is that what you said?
They could volunteer, yeah, but I thought their population was above two thousand.
Do we know if they have volunteered to be part of this program?
Well, do you know?
They have not, there's, there is no source for protection overlaying over the beach.
And and I asked, I asked about Dewey Beach and they don't have it.
Oh, Dewey wouldn't have anywhere near the population.
Right.
The the reason, well, that's very, that's very interesting and useful information because to me it it weighs? You know? On, it it it's relevant to the question of whether a moratorium is appropriate or not? If we're in sort of a unique situation.
So you've got two hands up, you've got Steve and Veronica, do you?
Okay, so, uh, which one of the ones go first, Veronica?
Veronica's had her hand up longer, so.
Let's go Veronica. That's all, what you got?
A couple of points I want to make, um, first of all, if you look at the groundwater recharge map, I don't know if you can see this, but Janelle can get you a copy. Lewis is significantly more impacted than any other um, coastal town, and in fact, based on the map I'm looking at? It doesn't even look like Rehoboth Beach or Dewey are impacted. There are portions of the inlet? There are portions of South Bethany and partially Fama- many of which may be within the county limits and not actually be with inside the town limits? So I think that's something that need to be evaluated, but I don't know that you're comparing apples to oranges when you're comparing? Rehoboth and Dewey to Lewis? And I think the whole point Steve's trying to make is that the conditions on Lewis Beach? Because of the existence of the canal separating? The beach from the wellhead makes it a, um? Makes Lewis Beach different than other excellent recharge areas within the state, and it's not clear to us? That when the state developed this protocol, then anybody recognized? That Lewis Beach is different than other excellent recharge areas? And do you?
Yeah, do you want me to address it?
Sure.
Okay, so it's an education for me is? Is, so we found out about this or, uh, this ordinance or on the books is? Is? And I asked for an FOIA, is could we get any of the information from other property owners on Lewis Beach so we can marry it with our? Results, well, obviously, we know the answer to that, we've never been done. So when I dug back further into it? I've had talked to Denrick, I've talked to Denrick in depth? A number of individuals in Denrick, and I'm not a scientist and this is way over my pay grade? But but if you want to know where this excellent recharge wellheaded protection came from, you should do some research on it? And Steve Hay, Cahill could probably educate you or your engine, cities engineer? It 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 migrated down from Newcastle County, from my understanding, from from them wanting to protect their wellheads? So the state? Had put a mandate together for all the towns? Throughout Delaware and they they wanted any excellent recharge areas? And it was equitably, nope, no, no defines like this is better than that, whatever? It was done by the Delaware Geological Society surveying, when they took thousands to thousands of photos or whatever investigation? And they equitably distributed the excellent recharge areas? So if they plopped it down Lewis Beach, it's the same, it's sandy soil, whatever the conditions to make it excellent? They just had that as a blanket? So the reality of it is, is? They a- a- mandated that every town in the state of Delaware adopt an ordinance by two thousand and six? Well? We've already talked about when when Lewis is adopted, it's two thousand and eight? Two years took them after the deadline, so when Lewis adopted it, and so if you look at any of the verbiages from Plush Review to Denmark, whatever? They applaud the city of Lewis's? Adoption of 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 their mandate? But Lewis? Went a little further? Sussex County has a thirty to sixty percent ratio? Lewis is applauded because they were a little bit more stringent, they're twenty fifty percent? We applaud that, I I as a property owner applaud that when it's applicable? And and there's a saying by Gordon Livingston? If the map on the ground is wrong? I mean, uh, it's a, let me just read it to you? It's pretty simple? And I'm gonna, and I'm gonna turn it over to Veronica and Steve? Once a long time ago, I was a young lieutenant in this eighty second airborne division, trying to orient myself on a field problem in Fort Brighton, North Carolina? As I stood studying a map, my platoon sergeant, a veteran of many junior officers approached? You figure out where we are, Lieutenant, he asked? Well, the map says there should be a hill over there, but I don't see it, I replied? Sir, he said? If the map don't agree with the ground, then the map is wrong? We're not trying? To say to you? We don't care, you never applied it, so don't apply it to us? Alls we're saying is to listen to the science, and by the way, in your comp plan? Mayor and council? Have a specific duty? To the residents, to the city, the citizens? That if things organically change within the zoning code? Or parts of Lewis, you have a responsibility to adapt it? And that's all we're asking is, is we, there's not been one study, not in mi- not in, um? All of Lewis Beach, there's not been one ordinance, and I've said that the other time, no harm, no foul, if there was a harm, there was a foul? We would all be upset? But there hasn't been any, there hasn't been any application of it because basically it hasn't harmed or affected anybody.
So guys, Andrew asked whether or not this ordinance would apply? To the existing properties on Lewis Beach, and I believe he was talking about the ordinance and not the moratorium? And if you look at the Lewis Code? Redevelopment, it reply, the this ordinance, existing ordinance applies to re- all redevelopment? Which is any proposed expansion, addition? Major facade change or rebuilding to an existing building, structure or parking facility? So any home that gets renovated on Lewis Beach, my parents used to own eighteen Cape and Lope and Drive? That house got knocked down and a beautiful home got built on it, um, within the last two years? That home is exquisite? Increased tax base, that home takes up probably eighty percent of the lot? All right, under this ordinance, he would have only been able to build on twenty percent of that lot? Unless he did this study and then only on fifty percent of the lot? So this is not just impacting Rick's property, this is impacting an entire swath of Lewis Beach? And people, when they go to rebuild or knock down ho- homes, you're going to discourage any kind of renovation? Because nobody's going to be able to afford it.
And then, can I add one more thing is? So, and Emery, you brought up and I and I think Andrew or somebody brought up, so? Today was a bad day on Lewis Beach side of town? The high tide, the nori, whatever this storm was, and I rode down there too? I ride down to that lot because I'm two blocks away from all the time? On even on a small rain without all the conditions today, there is a sandy water? On Cape Pen Open Drive, on the opposite side of the road from our site? From Dairy Queen all the way down to those houses, and I and I task every one of you, even on small rains? Go look at our property, there's not a drop on there? And here's what, you know, when we develop it, we are perfectly in mind and with tune, we don't want to add to that? We believe that, and I'm not pointing fingers, that's the sin of the past building officials who never adopted? Never approached this, so this is fine that we're doing it right now, because maybe we can get an ordinance in place that's fair? To the property owners? And fair to the town and mitigates this water to be where it's going to go? That's all we're asking, fairness, honest ballroom.
All right. I think right now we're talking about the moratorium.
Right, I I was gonna, I was gonna say that, I mean, I think as it relates to what the? Content of the ultimate ordinance to be adopted? That that discussion will start on Friday? Um, at the the wetlands, um, subcommittee, wetlands buffer subcommittee? Um, of the planning commission? I mean, I I think? What council has pending? Before you at this point is?
Moratorium.
The the moratorium or or if if the moratorium is not approved, then? Then we? Stick with the twenty percent? Um? The twenty percent threshold or the report? Until another ordinance is?
That's right.
So at this point, we have? A number of building permits where we have contacted the property owners and let them know that? Their um? Permits do not comply with the requirements of the code? And they're on hold, you know, pending the outcome of this.
Pending the outcome of the more of the vote on the moratorium at this point?
Yes.
They could proceed in the period? Uh, given, you know, if the moratorium is adopted, they could proceed in that period between then and whenever a board, whenever a new ordinance is adopted.
Yes, and?
Emery, have you had a, um, a sudden uptick in the number of? Requests for permits?
Now, it is.
No.
Um, we have five that had come in? Um, during the month of January that would have expanded impervious cover in this area? Um, one of them actually with the house they're building is within the twenty percent? So that that one will be able to be issued? Um, the others were holding and and? You know, we've told them they can resubmit or they can wait and see how this goes.
Okay. All right, we have, we, Sumner Cosby has written quite a bit into here, would we be better off? So, Sumner, you want to come back, you want to talk to us about it rather than read this whole thing?
Sure, but I think the, can you hear me?
Yes.
The, the, um, Anne Marie made a suggestion, um, uh, I'm? I I I don't think it matters? The things that I'm throwing in this, in the chat room are? Probably best dealt with is in this discussion about the ordinance, I think I'm kind of jumping the gun here, so? So Janelle, I'm just going to ask that I be, be made a panelist of this? Upcoming meeting? Um, that I just become a regular member of the Wetland Group? So that I can? I can weigh in on this? Um, that's all I would ask, um, but yeah, we can deal with the technical stuff later.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments at this point? We still have thirteen people as attendees, we've only heard from about three? Any other comments or questions?
Nope. You've got, we've got one, Rick Stover, I am unmuting you.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, Rick, go ahead.
I I think I'm gonna embarrass myself because? A lot of what you're talking about is over my head, but? Just so I understand, because I'm actually one of the permits? Um, if the moratorium is passed? Then? We will can be able to continue to follow the fifty percent coverage? Until a new ordinance would be adopted that might lower it to twenty, is that correct?
Correct, except I don't anticipate that the new ordinance would re? Reapply it at twenty, I think it would be something different than that.
Okay, but theoretically?
Current ordinance is twenty.
Oh, the, oh, right, but but we've just been, you've just been approving it up to fifty, is that right?
Um? The? There have been errors made as it relates to applying the ordinance.
Isn't the, uh, the answer to Rick's question a little bit different? If? The moratorium is passed and he gets a permit? The new ordinance won't affect him at all?
That's right, if he builds in that interim period.
Right.
All right, cause a permit between then and between then and the time whatever we adopt a new ordinance?
Right.
Okay, and we didn't try and rush it in.
I'm sorry, Rick, what were you saying?
We didn't, we didn't try to rush it in because we heard something like this, we, it it just was a coincidence that when we applied, they said, wait a minute, um?
Yeah, you you were in the first batch that got stopped in the queue.
Right, gotcha, all right? Love to get it back in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay. Anybody, anyone else care to comment this evening? Okay, hearing none, I think we can then move on to item two on this public hearing, which is a public hearing? And discussion on the ordinance of the mayor and city council? For the city of Lewis approving an amendment to the two thousand and fifteen Lewis Comprehensive Plan? To change the land use designation for the following parcels? Three thirty-five dash four point two zero? A dash one eighty-nine point zero zero and one ninety point zero zero from residential to commercial? I think we have discussed this in the past? Um, this is a a re- restoring of, uh, the red, the commercial? Uh, designations this property previously enjoyed?
Hey, may I step back, are you going to leave the public record open on the?
Well, I was gonna do it all, all of it, we'll leave all of it open at the end until till the eighth of, the noon on the eighth.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comment on this? Rob, did you have something?
I just wanted to ask if Anne Marie, can you provide us a chat transcript?
Yeah, she'll get one.
We can do that. Veronica's hands up.
Okay, Veronica. You're on. Rick, well.
Hold on, I don't.
Do you hear me?
We hear you.
Yeah, thank you again for this topic again. We bought this property back in two thousand sixteen. I'll take blame on not, some of it not moving forward. And that's personal, but we've worked on this property diligently. Diligently. And when in the Cape Gazette, you know, when two or three or four different notices about this meeting, it says. You know, basically what it says is no activity has been done on this property. That couldn't be further from the truth. We've spent tens of thousands of dollars in engineering, legal fees. Lewis BPW misinformation. I don't, I don't, again, I'm not here to, I'm not here to beat you guys up. It's, these are the facts is alls we want to do. And I do with every one of my neighbors, you can check any property I've ever done in Lewis is I talk to my neighbors. Because I care about them. And we want to put something there that we can allow under the codes. To make sure that we bring a value to the town. And the value is it brings property taxes perpetually, transfer taxes perpetually. And we just want, alls I want to do is in a concerted effort. To get to a resolution so we can go forward together, not just what we want to do. It's what we want to do with your competent building officials and town manager. With you guys, obviously, have all the particip- participation in it. And the people of Lewis to get this thing developed. And we're tired of the bureaucratic quagmire. It's it's tiring, you know, sometimes when you, I tell you this about the last meeting, public meeting. Developers, I'm not considering myself a developer, we don't build field of dreams. We build because it's a market condition and it's a piece of property that we see value in it, but not only value to us, but value to the residents. I've read your comp plan, I can't tell many times. I've read your zoning code, and what I don't know, I ask. Alls I'm asking for is to stop all this stuff with 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 roadblocks. Misinformation, rabbit holes, let's work together. Because this property is valuable to us and to the town. So I please ask you to do what you guys in your code. Not my code, your code, and you can go back to your September eighteenth meeting, two thousand and nineteenth and read it. You can go back, all the way back to when you approved it from general commercial to R three. And I can quote Kate Conyans saying, it's up to the builder, I mean, it's up to the owners to decide what they want there because somebody asked them on the panel. Wait, Anne Marie, what, I mean, Kate, what do you think? Well, it's who got the honor to decide. Well, that's, that's not as. That's not as, it, we were going through a process. But I encourage, when you guys think about this, read all the minutes. Read all the work that went into there. And if you don't, if you have a question, please ask me so I can be as honest. As I can be to the public and to mayor council, so it's all out there. The only thing I get angst over and disrespect is when when there's a pine, when there's opinions thrown out. After records are closed and have nothing to do, when the opportunity for everybody on that panel to ask me questions. And nobody asked me anything, I think you're doing a disservice to the town. And you're doing a disservice to me. So I ask you and I plead with you, if you have questions. I've looked at this thing so many different ways for four years, I want to get on with it. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Veronica, did you have comments you wanted to make or was? I know you're sharing the mic there.
No, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Steve's got his hand up. Steve Cahill.
Go ahead.
You want us to?
Yeah, sorry to draw this out. I was looking up to see where the Henlopen Acres wells were located. They're a really pretty good distance from that area with a lot of waterways in between. And the other thing I noted is that. You know, Lewis Beach. The supply wells for Lewis and the Henlopen wells are all in different drainage basins too. Something to be noted because, you know, the drainage basins, you know, that show where surface water is conveyed and groundwater typically follows surface water patterns. Just one more thing to note.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Are there any more comments about the second item here on the agenda?
Rick, I have a question, actually. It was my understanding that you were supportive of it, of the zoning reverting back to general commercial. And and it sounds like that may not be the case.
Well. Well, Andrew asked me a question, so I'm going to be quite candid with you. Yes, I I'm supporting GC because the the what are our. Our. Momentum since the springtime. And I wa- and I I debated this up in Boston. And I'm going to tell you candidly, my desire was at one time. To develop it, that's why I went to R three, because I considered and courteous of my neighbors. And I talked to them and I'll be honest with you, they were disappointed because they wanted a restaurant. I can't, I kid you not. And I told them what the application of a restaurant would be with the liquor licenses and whatever. And I said, I thought reading the comp plan and all the the code that R three would be a much better use for that, less. And if you look at the minutes, everybody, most everybody on that mayor and council agreed, less traffic, pedestrian safety. All those things, and I considered all that. And that's why we went to it. But in considering that, I had no idea I was opening up a Pandora's box. Because that's all the issues you guys brought, put on my table, planning committee, I mean, everybody else. Denrick dealt, not Denrick, Dell dot about entrances. These were things that I had, I I got educated on after we did. I'm like, I had no idea. Everybody going up Cape Pen up in Savannah all has entrances. But it became an issue. So when we tried to work with the town off Alaska Avenue, we discovered Alaska Avenue. Is mostly wetlands. Right, so so therefore it diminished what we could do over there as far as residential. As we stand now, if we if we could have gotten what we want of it, not because what I want, it's just because. The five lot subdivision, which we've drawn, we talked about from day one, is the best use for that property, period. And it's, why is that? Because if somebody, when we talked to Janelle and Anne Marie or whatever, and they said, well, it's four lots, this or that, it's the road issue. It makes it a major subdivision, you have to give ten percent. Four lots would have created, number one, four, three of the lots would have been big lots that they, somebody could have put. A a big structure on it like they did right next to us. I couldn't, I didn't want to allow that because the only objection in this whole process was that the neighbor says he hoped not big structures would go on that site. The other thing is we acquired two entrances. From Dell dot, why don't Cape Pen up on one Savannah? So I started to go away from there because I could get no traction with anybody in the city to work with me for a common solution that would work. And then it's, so when I opened up the Pandora's box to go down to general commercial, that took on a life of its own. And that's where we want to go. And I committed one hundred percent to general commercial because we feel it's the best use for that property. Considering all the, all the other things I had to go through and all the other boxes I had to check off.
Rick, can I ask you, can I ask you one more question about the parcel, about the parcel? It looks like, obviously, there are a couple pads already poured there. Do you know approximately or exactly how much of that lot coverage is already impervious?
It it's not, that that pad site was was, was, there was a building there, Andrew. I think you might know, I think you're a resident here. There was a building, it was a restaurant. So we we tore it down and the residual was that pad site and they had like a patio off it. I don't think it's that much. I I I don't know, I can, I can get it measured for you. I'm sure I have it in my, the engineer, and he's not on this call and because we did, we did factor that in because that factors in if we had to go to excellent recharge. A wellhead overlay provision, we had to factor what was already there. But I can't tell you, it's not much, but it does, it does. And it's impervious, but it does take up a portion of that property. I can't tell you the dimensions though. I could, I could find out for you if you like.
Thanks, Rick.
It's relatively small. You're right, Rick. Yeah, it's all too small. Hey, look, guys, at the end of the day is. To me, it's a flagship, it's an entrance to Lewis. I've always said that. I think everybody, a lot of people can recognize it. It's a nice piece, it's a really, a really good piece of property. In our, the total picture of development in Lewis, as it sits right now without annexations, there's very few properties that are going to be developed. Because it's not just, the land's not there. So what we're asking to do there, work with us, it was in the code. And we're not trying to start a precedent. There's a hundred other properties in Lewis on the beach side of town and historic part of Lewis. That could be developed and and we start a movement to all this density and all this stuff. I I'd be with with your mindset. This is a small twenty-six thousand thirty-three square foot piece of property on two different lots. We can do something nice there. I believe it in my heart of hearts. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else care to comment? Are there any other questions from the table? Okay, hearing none, I think we can. Close this topic as well. So as I said, in answer to Glenn's question earlier, we will leave the public comment period open on both of these topics until. February the eighth, which is next Monday, a week from today at noon. If anyone cares to submit additional written comment. If there's no further comment, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, and I thank everyone for their time this evening.
So moved.
Thank you, Rob. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Bonnie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you all for coming out there, being on the Zoom tonight, and we'll obviously see you all again on the eighth. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Night.
Good night.